Ps and Qs there. Okay, I'll start the meeting now. It's now 5:09 PM. The Joint Meeting of Planning Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, in the Veterans Room. Agenda item number one is roll call. DeeDee?
Yeah.
Catherine?
Here.
Joe, or Counselor Dow? Counselor Lozo?
Thank you.
And Counselor Adams. We do have a quorum. All right. Agenda item number two is to consider accept Planning Development meeting, draft meeting, minutes of May 17th, 2022. Unfortunately, I did not do them yet, but I'll have them on the next meeting. The agenda item number three, discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Helen Boyle to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ethics are in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend town council for confirmation?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Everybody should have their thing. Is it, Ms. Town Manager? I forgot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you and your members of the Subcommittee. I just want to let you know that all those items, I think it's two through 13, excuse me, two through 12, these are all people that have indicated their desire to seek reappointment. I did look at all of the documents that were provided. Didn't have the opportunity and I couldn't call that many people back. But in all instances, I am familiar with, she said, I'm familiar with almost all the names there and I've communicated with them during my time here. I can't recall receiving any negative comments about any one of them. Provided that all of their ethics are in order, I would have no problem recommending them for reapproval. As I indicated, almost everyone gave me somewhat of a narrative, some, maybe one that didn't. Ms. Doyle will give me quite a lot of information and I appreciate her time and her thoughtfulness and her response. But, you know, in this day and age, it's hard enough to get people to volunteer and we've had some good volunteers and good people there and the fact that they want to continue their service in town, I'm willing to reappoint them or seek confirmation from the council for reappointment.
Thank you, sir. I think I was the one who didn't fill it out.
I guess we have to go against you then.
This, uh...
Of Helen. I, you know, I've been on the Agricultural Commission with her for a number of years, like four years or something, so...
She's been great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, any other discussion? All those in favor? Four zero?
For just one person or for the entire?
Well, you know what? I'm just wondering, maybe we should, can we do that, Ms. Town Manager? Just put them all through at one time? Just read off their names?
There is under Robert's rules of order something called a consent agenda, where you're allowed, essentially, like when they do the budget, that you make a motion if we approve items now, I think four through 12, and if there's a second and there's no objection, I think you could do that. If you so choose.
So make a motion to, uh...
And then just pull out anyone you want to have.
But I would, then I would, um...
But these are all different. It's not like police...
Yeah, well, see, this is what I was thinking. You might have to advertise in advance that you're going to do a consent.
Yeah.
On all of it.
Well, I'm just thinking that, I mean, could we, they're all different boards, though.
Yeah.
Usually we'd do that with, like, it was a police officer, like, two or three police officers.
Maybe you just...
Create them off real quick. Okay. Just be on the safe side. This is how the agenda's set up. Okay. Discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Maureen Doyle to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation?
Confirm.
Okay?
Second.
Okay? I don't know her. She in the crowd? All right. Thank you.
I didn't know I was...
Thank you, Maureen. I appreciate it. I read the thesis and, uh...
I got the thesis.
I much appreciate it. Thank you for volunteering again.
It was for both, ComCom and Aricon.
Actually, this is where you can...
If I can defend my thesis.
You got it. No, I know. All right. So any actions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor? All right, four zero. Discuss review the town manager's recommendation for Maureen Doyle for the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council. Okay?
Second.
All right. All those, uh, discussion. All those in favor? Thank you, Maureen, again.
Thank you, Maureen.
All right. Uh, okay. All abstain from this one, but discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint me, David Adams, to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. But ethics in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation.
I'll move.
All right?
Second.
Okay. No, I have a question. I don't think that's a three-year term. I think it's one year at a time. For CMRC. Don't start him with me again.
Where's David? We'd like to ask him if he...
I think it's a, I thought it was a one-year term where we just reappoint every year or we sign.
I don't know what I'm talking about. I'll sit down.
I know what he's doing. I know.
We're gonna vote for three years. If anything changed, we can...
Come on.
That's the only thing I would look at is, I think it's just a one-year term.
All in favor? Cause he's abstaining now. He can't.
Let's, we'll keep it as this and if we change, we can change it on the, the...
Yeah, or CMRC tells me we're making a one-year term deal.
All right, all those in favor? Post, abstain. Thank you.
You're not voting anyway.
Thank you, Joe.
You're not voting anyway.
Yeah. Going somewhere, all right. Agenda item number seven, review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint David Livinggood in the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective 1 July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, pending the completion of ethics training. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation?
I'll move.
Okay? Please.
Second.
Okay? Discussion. Go ahead.
That's the first time? Or he wasn't on that board before?
He's been on that. He's the chair of it.
The Congress about that.
Yeah, I got a question about it real quick, but go ahead.
I was curious to, as I understand it, there were several vacancies on that committee, right? Ms. Manager?
That I don't have an answer to. I just know the ones that came before, so I'm not sure how many.
There's Lynn? And him?
Okay. We have a couple, like, came like, Ms. Cummins is the only one on the board. I mean, we have some that are like that.
So let's ask, when was the last time they even met?
Cause the last time I remember Dave coming here for some meeting, he commented on the fact that there were so, there were so few of them that they hadn't been meeting because there was nobody there to meet. They weren't showing up, so...
Ms. Dean?
Yes?
Quick question for you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Don't be.
The economic, David Livinggood. How was the last time the economic team met up?
We, I haven't been able to pull a quorum since I've been in position in November.
And how many, how many do you have on there right now?
Uh, three?
Three.
I think it's Tita, David, and, uh, Durgish.
Lynn?
Or, uh, no, uh, Lynn. Sorry, I missed you. Lynn. Durgish and David.
That's a seven-member board?
And I think so.
You don't have a quorum?
Yeah. And so what I had talked about was could we recruit the redevelopment authority to also run for Economic Development Commission or be appointed to Economic Development Commission? And then double up those meetings back-to-back? So they first meet as economic development, then redevelopment. But I don't know if that's really, you know, does that really serve the town? Is that the best, you know? Am I just trying to fill bodies, fill seats with bodies? You know, I don't know what the best...
I think once you're elected, you cannot sit on any board.
No, that'll be a place to count.
Is that the council?
It's not the council. I don't know if that would conflict, though, with the prohibition against quasi-judicials having multiple people sharing boards, though. Cause I don't, I, cause redevelopment can hold public hearings, which basically makes a quasi-judicial.
The economic is, doesn't have any power, does it? Real power?
They might, they might be able to do it.
Economic Development Commission?
So, yeah, I, so anyways, that's something I was trying to consider, to be able to fill it.
Maybe we could just push it out again here this summer and see what we can find again.
Yeah, we really need to do some promotion.
Okay.
Online boards. That's a big issue.
Go ahead.
Ms. Dean? Excuse me?
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, exactly. Maybe sometime, we'll have to do it tomorrow.
Question. Did he come to the meeting when you have the meetings on? Did he show up to the meeting?
David Livinggood.
Oh, yeah, he's great. Oh, he's very ambitious. He's been very dedicated to the group. Those quarterly meetings we were having with the EDC, the Redevelopment Authority Planning Board, the, oh, you know, all the ones that follow our department, he was participating in. And he really wants to see it rejuvenated. Yeah. So I would, I, you know, I would say, yeah.
We just need a little bit of push for it. Okay.
Yeah, he's great.
Yeah, I remember the...
We want to reappoint somebody to show up.
No, he does. He was good, but...
Just to make sure. The one who went to the board...
I know, I know who you're doing.
Where they had a joint hearing here with a planning board meeting with them, and he was the only EDC person to show up. I don't know. At the time, I don't even remember who was on there or something.
Yeah.
Never can, so...
Kinda died out.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on, okay, all those in favor? Four zero. All right, discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint David Pear to the Planning Board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, pending the completion of ethics training. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation?
I'll move.
Second, I need it?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Very well. Yep, very well. All right, all those in favor? Discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Corey Belros to the Planning Board for a three-year term effective 1 July, or July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, pending the completion of ethics training, pending the completion of ethics training. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for confirmation?
I'll move.
Okay?
A second.
All right. Discussion. Questions? All those in favor? Agenda item number 10, discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Terry Hansel to the Planning Board for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, pending the completion of ethics training. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation?
I'll move.
Okay?
A second.
All right. Discussion. Only question I have is, this is three on the planning board. They have seven total. How's that broken down? Is that, is it three, three, and one? Three, two, two, or something like that when it comes to?
Probably three, two, two.
Okay.
There's three here. Can't be two, two, two.
Well, no, so you have seven. So it'd be three, and then two next year, and then two next year, and then the following year, then three again. That rotating timeframe. Yeah.
Probably because one of the board resigned. That's why three this time could be different?
Well, I think they have, they have that schedule broken down for those seven. So if it's three, they do have seven now, I believe. I think they have seven now. So two will be up next year. And it, okay, then the two will be up following year.
How many people on the planning board? Six or seven?
They're definitely on seven.
So it's six. Cause, okay, good. All right. Dave, Terry, Corey, Pam.
Mike. Mike Loin.
Mike Loin.
Sandy Ackley.
Sandy Ackley?
That's it.
Yeah, and I think that Jason King resigned.
Did he?
He doesn't live in town anymore.
David McGonagall, Sandy, Corey, Terry, Pam. That's it.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? All those in favor?
That was short.
Yeah, well, he moved. We had to remove him from the Veterans Council, too.
Next year will be five.
Well, we have to do the charter. Once the charter gets all changed up. That may be different, though. But, okay, discuss review the manager's recommendation to reappoint Lynn Bertrand to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ethics are in good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for confirmation?
I'll move.
A second.
Okay? All those in favor? Post? And discuss review the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Patrick Spinelli to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Ethics standing. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council.
I'll move.
Okay?
A second.
Okay? Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor? The only thing I see them coming up, the council coming up with is, was this, were these openings given out affording other residents to partake? I can see somebody asking that question. Just throwing it out there. All right. Number 13. Discuss review whether to recommend town council entertain an agreement with the most advantageous, oh, never mind. Well, we'll amend this in a minute. Nope, not that one. Excuse me, for a minute. But we'll go with this agenda. We'll amend, we'll have to amend it. Discuss review whether to recommend town council enter into an agreement with the most advantageous proposer to fill a one-year contracted position as a redevelopment authority executive director and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
I'll move.
Okay?
Would the council, or would the Subcommittee consider moving this agenda item until authority is available? Mr. Karen, till Mr. Karen returns? He was just on the phone.
Okay. I'll tell you what. There is an agenda change, so you know, because there has been a, what, somebody proposed, there was a proposal, and it was brought in front of the town, town manager and Ms. Dean. So I can read off the agenda item itself that would make, be the, it'd be the motion for the town council on the 6th. All right? So mind doing a friendly amendment just to postpone? Who was the first one down?
I didn't remember.
Okay.
If you just postpone it, you don't need to...
Yeah, postponed it when he gets back? All right. Agenda item number 14, discuss review whether to recommend town council enter into the agreement with Massachusetts Department of Transportation or Mass DOT for shared streets funding in the amount of $49,544 to purchase snow removal equipment on pedestrian ways and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
I'll move.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay? If you guys recall, I know Ms. Dean or the town manager talked, but this is something that came through us before. We, town council had recommended all the way through to send the application up. It looks like one of the two that were approved, which would be the snow removal machine on sidewalks. But, that being said, Ms. Dean, did you want to say anything at all, or?
The bad news is we applied for two grants to the shared streets. One was for crosswalk painting throughout the entire town, and we did not get that grant.
Well, we got one.
Yes. I think the DPW was pleased to hear that we had a scrap. Let me ask you a question.
What's that?
Should that have gone through DPW versus us?
Well, originally, it went right through here, Planning Development, for the application. And there was two, well, affected, I'll let Ms. Dean, it's confusing after a while.
Yeah, so we, this continues to be brought up why it goes to one Subcommittee or another. If it came through you originally, we're bringing it back to you to accept. And so we've talked about maybe in the future, if there's something that really, duh, affects both, like, I'm doing all of the grant, but it's really a DPW project, maybe we'll have both Subcommittees invited to the meeting? We're not sure what the best rating level is.
I, I think, you know, it's weird because we, because it is an economic and planning that they're putting, the ones putting in the grant. And then, but it happens to be probably a DPW product. And so, you know, there's been, Ms. Dean has done a good job trying to send one, maybe to DPW. I think there was a complete streets project or something like that, but it still went through economic, but it's DPW.
I know, it's confusing.
So I think that's where we, as long as it gets recommended up to the Subcommittee up there. For a long time, P and D did all, all the, every grant that came through, came through Planning Development. And I do know there's been a lot of questions, should be a DPW, should be this and that. You know, we, it's a flip of the coin sometimes. All right? Any questions on that? Congratulations, though. That's great. We got at least one out of the two and they helped clean the sidewalks. All right. No questions? All those in favor? All right. Agenda item number 15, discuss review whether to recommend town council approve a plan for the park acquisitions and renovations for communities or park grant program to acquire 76 Central Street and construct a pocket park to be reimbursed up to $175,000 or 70% consistent with the urban renewal plan and allow the town manager to sign any related documents?
I'll move.
Okay?
A second.
Okay? Ms. Dean or Mr. Town Manager?
Cause we had to need to tie this to the project that we're doing over, with the tip and everything else.
If you'll remember, she came to you for Landwater Conservation Fund grant, uh, the last fall, winter, and you approved a plan for the, so this LWCF, had a 50-50 match from the town, 50 from the feds. And we were proposing a pocket park at 76 Central to complement the tip project and the hopeful rail trail that will go through there. This is something that is outlined in the urban renewal plan that was approved back in 2011, something that the redevelopment authority has been trying to pursue over the last year and a half, two years. And so they've gone through with the appraisal and they're sort of ready to potentially go forward once we figure out the funding. We submitted the application to Landwater Conservation Fund. They, and January, sort of turned back to us and said, "Don't apply for this grant. Apply for the park grant. It's a 70-30. It's better for your town and the funding timeline is more reliable." I feel like because we are more intimately involved with that grant administrator, it's the same person who's doing the park grant that we rewarded last year to do the McCann Fields. She has a level of familiarity with me. I feel grateful that we got the guidance from the state. And anecdotally, speaking with Amherst, they received landwater conservation funds for a waterfront project. They said it was delayed by two years waiting for the federal funding and that we're definitely better off going with the park grant. So this is a good direction. I also was concerned, right from the start, we wouldn't get park grants back-to-back. But she had said right from the start that this is not an issue, that we should be awarded. It seems like it's within the project guidelines, or within the park guidelines.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Steve. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
Well, I was, I was just gonna ask, I think it's great to have a pocket park, but I've seen several pocket parks in South Bridge and once they're done, nobody takes care of them. I'm thinking, there's one on Fulton Street, there's one on Main Street. So I hope that there's some, something put in there, like, and we're gonna maintain it, too. Like picking up trash, painting, things like that.
And the question I had is, I remember the last time we got discussion with this project, one of the issues that was coming up was that you had to go out for another grant for appraisal. What was, how did that, what did that, we never saw the final appraisal. So what did that end up coming out to be? And I remember there was some concern at the council about the original appraisal and that you were going to get a second appraisal. So what's going on?
Sure.
Not sure where you are in this, but certain things, certain times appraisals are exempt from being discussed. You know, they're exempt from public records and discussion and public meetings. They're more suitable for an executive session. I just throw that out because I don't know what you're up to saying.
Thank you for protecting us.
Cause I think we do need to know what that, what that, I can understand the whole executive session thing.
We did, we did go into executive session in the redevelopment authority.
We've never seen it.
And so, it hasn't come out, it's not, right? When do executive session minutes become public? Once the, once the...
Once the issue is not necessary.
Yeah, so the issue is still continuing, so it's gone to executive session through the redevelopment authority. The second appraisal, if you'll recall, was required because for the Landwater Conservation Fund, for federal acquisition of the land, we needed to do a more in-depth appraisal.
So we don't need it now.
And we, and, oh, and this was all part of the conversation with this grant administrator. She assured us that the shelf life of this appraisal, which she had already been provided, will, it'll last for this application cycle in the park grant to be able to be used because it's also needed for the park grant. So I'll be able to reuse the same appraisal for the park grant. We're really lined up for this. She's basically someone who has a menu of grants and says, "Oh, no. If you've known better, you would have applied for this. Here, do this." So that's basically where we are, if you use that appraisal for that.
Well, that's, that's good to hear.
Yes.
Could we put it on the next, for, if it's gonna go up to the town council, can we put it on for a brief executive session before we actually vote on it so we get some details? Because I know if it's gone through redevelopment authority, that's fine. But if we're gonna be ultimately making the decision, we need to know what is going on.
What's this due, Ms. Dean? The park grant?
July 14th.
I'm saying we can do it, we can do it at the next set, at the next council meeting, just a brief executive session, then come back out.
I just wanted to know a timeframe. That way, I'm trying to figure out if doing an executive session before or after, but I'm trying to figure out if doing an executive session before or after, but I have to get with the chair to figure that out.
Yeah.
Where, I don't know what Monday looks like yet.
I would say that the Monday meeting, Monday meeting is very long.
So my question then would be, is, so there's no executive session set up yet. Could we do it before the town council meeting, like at 6:30?
Yeah, we could.
Or we could theoretically throw an executive session right in the middle of the agenda and say, "We're going into executive session for like 10 minutes, then we come back out again." It doesn't happen often, but I've seen it done, not in our town.
I think I'd rather either have it before, if that's a possibility.
I would too.
But we have until July 14th. Can, can we, can we do this myself, the town manager and the chair have a discussion about it? And then keep people informed if that's okay? If it's gonna go on the sixth or it's gonna go on the 23rd?
This is the 27th.
27, I keep something in my head if you're saying 23rd, but 27?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no problem doing it at all if we do it before or not, but I'll talk to the chair about it. See what we can do.
I mean, I'm not opposed to doing this in general, I just wanna make sure we're right.
Absolutely, okay. But we can still, we can still recommend it up to the town council or not, so.
Is this, is this Mr. Morrow's little building?
Yes.
Yes. This is what we're discussing.
Uh huh.
The monuments, the money, where he builds all those monuments, yeah.
Okay, maybe we're just gonna move to.
Ma'am, I think there's, he's working on something. I think so, pretty sure. The other question, so 175 reimbursed from the state and then 75 reimbursed through CDPG miscellaneous account. And you still have like 25 grand in there after that, if that goes, okay. So really we know where the money's coming from. Okay, all those in favor? Post.
Good discussion, thank you.
Thank you guys for reminding us about that too as well. All right, Jedi number 14. I'm sorry. No, no, 13. We'll go back. We'll discuss whether, I'm gonna read this off. It's not on your agenda, but I'm gonna, it's a revised motion because the proposal was opened up and it was in front of the town manager and I believe Misty. So, "Discuss, review whether to recommend town council enter into the agreement with Mark Karen, employee of Capital Associates Incorporated, as the only proposer, proposer, to fill a one-year contracted position as a redevelopment authority executive director, contingent on background check and ethics training and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork." Thank you. Thank you. This is town manager and Miss Dean. I'll leave that to the discussion.
So it's my understanding that the town has been aware of Mr. Karen for a long time and that there were indications that he might be interested in getting involved in the town. We put out the request for proposals not knowing who we would get. We cast the net pretty wide. I asked for two minimum qualifications. Either expert in real estate with the best-case scenario, a councilor in real estate license, which is rare. There's probably about, I think, 30 of them in the state. But for instance, that gentleman, Rodney Hagian, had one. I saw someone like him who had a big macroeconomic level, understanding of the town as an ideal candidate. I also saw people like, someone in community development corporation experience or previous redevelopment authority experience. I did put into the RFP people with public service experience and asked for that to be coupled with related coursework. Who's looking for either people with experience in urban planning, et cetera. So Mark's proposal came as his business, Capital Associates Incorporated. However, we wrote in the RFP that it's not the company we're hiring, it's the individual. So we're hiring Mark Karen of Capital Associates to do the one-year contract based on his minimum qualifications of real estate development. Talking with the HR director who talked about maybe wanting to see transcripts or relevant coursework typically caused within the RFP in states, the real estate development and coursework experience. Or the, no, it said within, it said real estate development or public service and coursework. We're talking to Mark, a lot of his schooling is from back in the day.
I don't look my age, I'm sorry.
And having served in the House of Representatives from 2000, from 1999 to 2007, we know he has a lot of public service experience, but that does not give carp lunch, right? We still substantiate his projects. And so what he and I will do is we'll sit down and go over what he had indicated in his cover letter where some of the projects he's been involved with to substantiate the real estate development experience. And then now it'll give us the confidence to say, "Yes, you are fully qualified." In the meantime, he'll do ethics training. He will fill out a disclosure statement for any potential dealings that he's had or will have with the town. And we'll, what else are you gonna do? You're gonna do background check and then be on a one-month, sort of every month measure for us. So every one month we'll pay him based on how well he's doing, not, we will not be changing his pay. He will be paid if he is succeeding in the measures we indicated in the RFP, which we're filling our storefronts, turning our reputation around, even creating events in the downtown. You know, all the things we know need to be done, but we don't have the manpower to do it. And so it's an exciting time to be able to bring someone on who cares a lot about the town. And I think we're all excited to see some movement. So I think, I sent the town manager an email asking if we could potentially have Mark present at town council meetings. I'm not sure how frequently that will happen, but I'm sure you will see him throughout this process. He'll be working underneath in the economic development office. And we are hitting the ground running before he's even on board. Tomorrow, we're bringing him for two walkthroughs of properties and to meet a potential brewer who wants to come to town. We've got him going to Stirbridge where there's gonna be chamber hours within Mass Grove Capital Corporation, Mass Development, MOPD, three major players at the state level that potentially could work with property owners that I want Mark to hear the conversations of when these people meet with him. So we're setting him up for complete success, right? We're lining all the docks up for him to run with it. One of the other big projects, we'll be looking at how we can try to take advantage of the opportunity zone funds. We hear people like Julio Vega talk about how do we lure those investment funds our way? We have to almost line up a block of properties to make ourselves invited. It's complex, it's complex stuff that I'm hoping Capital Associates could have the savvy and sophistication to handle. So it's, it's, I think, a big deal.
Thank you, Misty.
You're welcome.
Good question. Mr. Karen, I believe, I believe he may be in the crowd.
Yes.
Who would know by his presence? But Mr. Karen, would you like to say anything?
You know what you get if you ask me to speak.
I know. Wait, what, 36 seconds, we're killing the rules and regulations here.
Listen, I'm excited. Not unfamiliar with anybody here at the board, either in the past or even that you've engaged in conversation with me going forward. This is a labor of love. I have children and my ex-wife still lives in town, my mother lives in town. And if anything, it's been one of those things she's, is there more we can do? The answer is yes, of course. And it is, you know, my distinct pleasure to put my efforts here and finish, and I shouldn't say finish, but progress where it is in the groundwork that has been done. Not just in my time, 15 years, but you've got wonderful counsel and skill sets in many offices that we have currently right now. I don't think there's been a brighter outlook or sense of hope than what you've got accomplished. And I mean that not to fluff anybody's seat, but both politically and administratively. And it's a big deal and maybe, and I'm not gonna pay him the, you know, but why we are where we are. The good part is, is we are filled with opportunities, challenges, but opportunities. And I'm convinced that we're gonna make some real great headway. And as far as the public side, my face is not the face of the efforts that go forward in town. It is yours. It's mine to make sure that we promote everything up to your level so that the community is engaged and vested in everything we are looking to produce on our behalf. And if we speak as, you know, it's, I'm a servant of theirs, it's on their behalf. So it is a quality of living and a quality of life that is going to be, I think, we're charged to raise in this town. That's our stewardship or our obligation. And it's gonna be through economic development in my role.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Councilwoman Steve, and then I'll go to Misty.
Okay, a quick question for you and then I want for Peggy, sir. Mark, so you just mentioned challenges and opportunities. What would you say are the biggest challenges and the biggest opportunities to Southbridge Towns?
Sometimes they roll into the same, same answer. I think we have a, I'm not gonna say I think, it's, it's, and we need to own it. We just need to accept it and go from there. Go with the subject of our reputation isn't one where it's like, "Oh, hey, developers are knocking down the doors." So that's to say we don't have opportunities. But by and large, that air of, "Hey, how do I get my investment money? How do I, how do I make those investments into, you know, property or business investment and exploration, expansion into the town itself? How do I get in there?" We've gotta, we've gotta make that happen. That is one of my goals. It's like, "Hey, I want, I want a piece of that action." We've gotta make that happen. And we've got a, we have to work on our social, we have to work on our social demographics. Where do we lay in educational attainment? Our, our median income, income? Those types of things need to rise. Crime statistics need to be better so it becomes a safe community. Public, homeownership, owner occupancy, I believe is a big, big challenge for us and one of the greatest opportunities to change the environment by which we are living and working in. Vested, vested people are people who live here, but people who own here. And it's, it's, and we're at a stage macroeconomically, if we look at it, investment dollars are going heavily into residential acquisitions. Not necessarily for their benefit, but for their asset holding value and is to become landlords. Not, not residents, landlords.
Right.
And we, we will further perpetuate or slide down a hill if we don't get that vested in that owner and, here in town. We, we have that.
How do you see us breaking that, that land, that distant, that absentee landlord?
I couldn't help it over here and I apologize for going out there. So another allegation that we sever too. Not knowing our redevelopment, you know, who, have we filled all the spots on our redevelopment authority? Have we, do we have the spots all on our housing authority? Both those agencies have great reach if we utilize them, if we see them as allies to the cause. That is not new and wondering, geez, do they, do we, are all the seats filled? Are all the appointments made? Are people willing to accept those appointments? And then there had been past challenges, I go off memory, my time in seats, in your seat, not necessarily here, but in the other room. And where there was a, there was a thought that you want to keep them dormant because it dilutes the power concentration in a particular office. Need to engage people, in my humble opinion, and in the direction of people you've put in front of me. That we want to do that. Did those reaches and then the, you know, an allegation of responsibilities to those certain tasks are gonna be vitally important for success, in my opinion, as you asked me today right now.
And hey, how many, how many other applications did you get?
Zero.
How much was it actually that I presented?
A pretty while, at least three or four weeks. And again, I cast the net wide. I emailed everyone I thought would be a good candidate for it. It's a low dollar amount and it's a large commitment for anybody who's in the consulting business. I've heard it from a couple of them that they couldn't mix up their workload enough to be able to manage just one account for an entire year. And so my strategy, had we not gotten a qualified candidate, would have been to come back and say, "Does it need to be full-time and/or can we offer more money?" So we've gotten that pretty good.
Don't mean to interrupt. How much was it again that we agreed, the law was 80, right? Okay.
And that's a 1099, so they're responsible for their own finances. There's no reimbursements, there's no, you know, covering expenses.
Councilwoman Steve, you good? Sorry, you mean, okay. Uh, Misty?
Yeah.
And then I'll, Ms. Doyle, I'll get you in a second.
So one of the connections I, I love about Mark coming on board is someone mentioning that, or you mentioning in your proposal, how he was part of the initial acquisition of the rail trail land. And so it's been an issue since Joe Petrona and, and the town council to be pushing forward with the rail trail. I don't know how much Mark is aware of our day-to-day activity, but we have now applied for this EDA grant and we're waiting. Wouldn't it be a fun experience for him to be able to see the grant be accepted and be part of the construction of the rail trail? I think that would be for anybody, a longtime politician. When there's a, when there's a long town to things and you can actually be part of it, it must be rewarding.
If I might, and it won't ring that, and I'm sorry for being...
No, no problem.
Problems, yeah. That, Peggy, is one of the largest magnets to my attention too that are big. It was, again, sitting as a town councilor, the business on Main Street, listening to Nick Soltar, Ed Calpa, and Ed Ol. Some faces names who can't speak any longer on their own, but we'll count on their behalf. And taking it to the state house and for during the worst, the worst, well, except for now. Actually, let's just put it, the worst economic times at the, at the time. And being able to solidify the funding to acquire that, that railroad was incredible. It was a great source of economic, it added to energy at the time. There was investment along those lines. 12th Green Street arguably doesn't even be looked, isn't looked at at the time if we weren't making that kind of effort along that rail. And there were other pieces that were, they were bought up, it's in Hope, and then there's a piece, sorry, I forget the name. That lays long on Hope Street that, you know, all of a sudden had new eyes on it. It is a wonderful piece. And if I might just refer back to my initials and comments where the social, economic demographics, standard of living, quality of life, those things, that trail hits so many, checks off so many of those blocks. And it does add a focal point and a visitation reason to Southbridge on a purely positive level if we are maintaining a good stewards of that asset that we, that we own.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Ms. Doyle?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to say, I think Mark would be great in this position. I've known him for many years. I remember when he was state rep and we met at Friendly's for coffee to talk about issues. You don't get that from many state reps. So I appreciate that and he's done a lot of work for the community. And he's organized cleanups and, and wonderful things with the teenagers. And I think it would, it would be a good mix of his skills to be in this position.
Oh, thank you.
Quick, quick, uh, quick question at the, did you have anything else? Okay. Quick question, it may be a little off the top, but you brought up opportunity zones. I wanna go until seven, I'm just kidding. Opportunity zones, I think we in Southbridge have two of them.
Correct.
Unless it's been extended and I'm not aware of. One's in the American Optical area, right? Is that, and then one in the Globe Village? I thought there were certain areas with it.
So I don't think it reaches to, it doesn't even reach to the 205 Main, actually. So it ends right about there, Everett. And it doesn't go any further. And it's the, two of them go sort of up towards the airport and then over towards the Globe Village.
Okay, that's maybe what I'm thinking of was, because I knew the Globe Village was part of it.
Yeah.
So I guess my biggest thing with the opportunity zones and being able, for businesses to reinvest in themselves in a sense, pretty much take capital out of their own business to the best, correct, if I'm not mistaken? And there's some tax breaks or something like that from the federal government?
So I don't know how many people are familiar with the opportunity zones, but without misspeaking, I'm in the middle of asking Quabog Valley CDC's loan specialist, Alan Singer, if he can please meet with me and with Mark as soon as he gets hired and with Julio Vega to start to wrap our heads around what we understand. There's, I mean, there's, there are, the IRS, the IRS has released informationals about the opportunity zones. You are getting capital gains forgiveness up through 2026. So we've already sort of gone through the, you know, half the time. This was part of the Trump tax reform package. It was a bipartisan win for everybody. Now it's a matter of can you lure some of theirs, not just opportunity zone funds from your own investments, but there are also funds that investors make. That if you can lure those funds into your area, you can get that money. But I don't, I don't have my head around it enough to be able to know what the best strategy is. Again, that's why I'm hoping some of them...
And the reason why I bring that up is the fact that we've had this for, what, five years now? Opportunity zones, and I don't think there's been any investment or spending some time to understand it. And it's one of those things that, I think, the county of Worcester received 13 or something like that, and we got two of them. And so I'd just like to take advantage of, you know, just like we're doing the liquor licenses, trying to, trying to wrap our hands around the opportunity zones. But I don't mean to go way off the subject. It's just one of those things, it's another opportunity for our town to invest itself or others.
There are just two more points about the opportunity zones. The prior director felt like it wasn't a tool to be taken advantage of, that it was something that, it didn't, it didn't...
It wasn't enough for investment.
It wasn't, it was just an added bonus if you were coming here anyway. It didn't change anyone's actions. And so maybe we can revisit that and see if, if it does actually bring people here. What I would argue is that if you were to survey the purchaser of 340 Main Street, 318 Main Street, you know, some of these recent investments, they probably were doing it because it was within an opportunity zone. So I think it has already had an impact in the town. And now it's a matter of how do we get those storefronts up and going? How do we create more, more value of a couple of properties to make it a portfolio that investors want to come invest?
Thank you, Misty. Okay, I just throwing that out there to, and, but, Councilwoman Steve?
Since we're on this topic, I have one little question out there. I know, is there any way in this opportunity zone, or maybe, I don't know if you can answer or Mark can answer this, I guess some of his ideas, on how to make this work in a way that it can build businesses that are locally based rather than recruiting people from outside to come and take up spaces? Because I would much rather see us grow, grow within, within the community rather than recruit big store, big chains and all this other people come in where we can't necessarily rely on them. Because basically they're still absentee landlords, the one we were talking about a minute ago. I'd rather see it built from within.
Those are our challenges. I think we can set those preferences, if you will. And hopefully we can get, as we communicate, as we state these things, if we can get out to the streets, really, oh, the town's working with us. There seems to be a separation, it's not us, we, the town. It's, oh, they, even all the residents at the town are doing something and they want me to participate or they're looking for me to participate. Those are the types of things. Spoken word's a powerful thing.
Okay, thank you. Misty?
Yeah, the only thing I'm seeing anecdotally, I don't know if the rest of you see it, is that it's just so hard for any retail to survive and be able to pay rent these days. And so what really succeeds are restaurants. And if we can promote a local restaurant by all means, if we could bring a restaurant in the lower-profile area to the Main Street, maybe that's the way you do it, you're graduating them into a higher-profile business. Or if you, you know, you know people, one of the ideas people float often is these community kitchen ideas where you start from your home, you're doing your community kitchen, packaging, et cetera. And then maybe you grow into something more. I don't know if right now we may have to just skip that idea and go straight to trying to get as many restaurants as we can up and going in the downtown to try to create something to do.
Is there any way we can, I mean, is there any way we can do something that will help us actually reduce the cost, right? Because, I mean, I think having other ideas for restaurants are good, but people and the community is going to need to be able to get basic stuff to live on. You know, and that's not necessarily gonna come from a restaurant. We're gonna need it, I mean, because I don't, I don't, quite frankly, I see huge issues in the, the bigger national global economic situation that we're seeing is kind of creeping up on us quickly, maybe not quickly. And, you know, I wanna see if we can have it be a situation where we can support ourselves in as many possibilities, not just restaurants, as po, in many ways as possible. And that's gonna mean, you know, being able to, even to get, get to the point of basic, getting back to having somebody where we're making, where we're making clothing and doing some of the other stuff that we basically need to have. Because we can't rely on it coming from China or from California or from Iowa or whatever for much longer.
Well, I think there's a lot of big, long discussions that could be had on everything. I, my mind is going all over the place right now, so on that. But is there any other discussion?
We have to tell them, Tim.
Yes.
So that's good news, they're just not on Main Street.
Good luck.
If you feel that's...
All those, all those in favor? Post and a small present.
Thank you.
See, the, what's the next question?
So we will see you tomorrow for walkthroughs and then I cannot leave before or after. So if I could please get on your schedule.
Motion to adjourn?
I was gonna say, I mean, my special, I don't think, we are ahead.
Oh, just to sit down, I suppose.
Certainly.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Thank you all. Much appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you.